Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Please be advised, in the event of a fire emergency and alarm will sound, please know all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone, please turn your cell phones to silence. Thank you for your cooperation. Additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda. Dr. Chanel.
This evening, you do have additions to the agenda. You're going to see there some of the treasurer's reports and some of our finances that Mr. Nardone was able to finish for us this past weekend. Thank you for your patience on that.
Thank you. First order of business is our consent agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following consent agenda. One through nine. Minutes from 3/11/2025. General warrant number 57 and 60. Lunch warrant number 14. Federal warrant number 11. Extra class treasurer report from February. CSE recommendations. Budget transfers from February. Appropriation and revenues. I'm sorry, appropriation and revenue status from February and district treasurer report from February. Make a motion, please.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Moving on to communications. Tonight, I would like to start communications with a recap of the work that our group did for our board retreat, mentioning the five principles that we came up that sort of modeled the Raider Five. But I, we had talked about mentioning these at every meeting and we never got around to it, so I'm going to, I'm going to start doing that or be better at it. The five principles are respectful, united, inclusive, intentional, and on mission. We are committed to listening and asking questions to inform our decision-making. We will honor every voice and speak with one. We will ensure that all board members have the information necessary for good decision-making. We will acknowledge all measures of success across our school community. Students will be first in all our decision-making. Those are the five principles that we developed in that work group that we did late winter, early winter, wintertime. Next, we're going to go on to correspondence and marking period five honor roll. Dr. Chanel.
Absolutely. So tonight, in your board packet, you do see that the honor roll for marking period five, just in comparison, year over year, you will see that we're holding very steady. 66% of our, of the students in grades nine through 12 were actually on one of the honor rolls, whether it be honor roll or high honor roll. So our students are hard at work each day, making us proud. Much to be thankful for there. Look at them all right now. I can't not. You guys.
You want to move to the tax levy before I go on to my?
No, let's do that and we'll, we'll come back.
So in front of you tonight, you'll see this packet that I had Sue print out for everybody about the upcoming law that is asking or telling us that we need to have a student member as part of our board. This will be in effect July 1st. This NISBA packet was just sent out to us and has more information in a question and answer format. I'd like you to review it. There's six different options, I believe, that you can do in terms of how to elect a student rep to the board. So we have to decide which one we want to do. This is a non-voting member that doesn't go into executive session, but offers their input at the table with us. So please review that.
Can I just add to that, that the, we do need to have a policy meeting? We get all of our policy updates from everyone, BOSI's. There's not currently a policy available to us. Though, NISBA has put out a sample policy. We do have some other policies that we need to review. So in terms of moving ourselves forward, I think it would be worth it for us to look at NISBA's sample policy and start to kind of wrap our heads around it as a governance body, the direction that we want to go. Some school districts are going to use their student council president and vice president as a backup to that. Other schools are going to run elections and let their, let the students actually appoint or, or vote in a representative for the school. So we have some decisions to make there, which I think would be imperative before the school year ends. If we need something July 1, we definitely need to activate our student body before spring is over.
I am signed up for a webinar, April 23rd, that gives more information on this. And I just learned at the board president meeting that Genesee Valley School Board Association is putting together a training for this student government person that they're hoping to have in place in June for, so that the, the training can happen before the July 1st implementation.
May I ask two questions, please?
Yes.
I recall this, to me, this isn't new. This is something that was floated maybe 10 or 12 years ago and for, for whatever reason, it failed. Now, I'm curious what, what we're going to do different. And when you say the young man or woman will have a seat at the table for, for discussions, did I hear that right?
Yep, they will be an active participant.
Okay, that being said.
Not a voting member.
No, I understand that, obviously, but I don't, you see, they're, they're, never mind. I'm all done. Thank you. I don't want to come across as negative.
Yeah, no, it's definitely not new in that there have been lots of school boards that have had active members of their student body on the school board. What is new is that it was an option and now it's not.
I'm not, it's, it's.
But you're, it, well, when, when Mrs. Dahl and I originally talked about it, I think to your point, the struggle is, especially if you're talking about your student council president and vice president, and looking across at your vice president right now, she's a member of Brainstormers. She's going to graduate in the top of her class. She is completely all dressed up in this moment, ready to be lead in the musical that goes on this weekend. Like, the idea that your student council president, especially in schools our size, are not already so steeped in everything that we do in the school, I think causes the challenge then for them to be at your Tuesday board meetings. And I think that, that's where we have to be very thoughtful about how we do want to gain student voice in a way that means a student could be at the table with us without that kind of interruption. So it might be in our best interest to actually ask across the student body who is interested in this, from a civic responsibility standpoint.
It's a good idea, but it, but it puts a added stress on the student. It puts added stress on seven board members because seven board members are now going to go out of their way and be extra polite to be, to try to continually include somebody in a conversation or a discussion that they don't want to be included in. You follow me?
It's definitely going to have its challenges.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to figure out. And, and to that end, I think the goal is to make sure that at this table, when we're making decisions, that we're capturing student voice. Like that's, yeah. So I, but you're, you're not wrong, that there's some logistics in there that we're going to have to work out to make it feel a win-win situation for the student, too, so that they don't feel that they come here and their voice still doesn't count.
I agree, but when, but when you said that BOSI's has this thing that they're going to shove down our throats by July 1st, that, that's what got me. They, they want to have it so the student can be, can be trained.
Yeah, like a training or onboarding, similar to what a new school board member does.
That's, I don't want to come across as negative because I'm not.
I suspect that there will be a transition period as that new member is added and sitting at the table with us. Directly speaking to what you're saying, like the awkwardness of some of it, I think over time, it will become more natural. That's my hope.
Time four. Thank you.
I miss it, I miss the Raider Points of Pride. This is horrible. That's what we normally start with, so I apologize. I'm going to go back through mine. Do Raider Points of Pride. Dr. McNair, would you please start us off?
We are thrilled to announce that two Raiders will represent us at the 2025 Greater Rochester Ronald McDonald House All-Star Game on Saturday, March 29th, at Fairport High School. Hazel Nickerson and Kate McCowen will join the top seniors in basketball and cheer from across Section 5.
It's with great pride and excitement that we recognize our Raiders who received and won Winter 2024-2025 LCAA and Section 5 Season Honors and Championships. Cheerleading was Kate McCowen. Boys Basketball, Colin Flut. Girls Indoor Track and Field, Emma Brogan. Wrestling, Jacob Bishop, Colby Burns, Simon Martin, and James Patnella. Girls Basketball had Ava Amorice, Olivia Amorice, Hazel Nickerson, and Mackenzie Parry.
Our National Honor Society hosted a Red Cross blood drive for our students and staff. We had 19 donors and 10 of them were first-time donors.
Our archery club traveled to the New York State Fairgrounds in Syracuse to compete in the 2025 New York State Bullseye Tournament.
We were well represented at the 2025 Glow With Your Hands Healthcare Event at GCC. Raiders enjoyed career workshops, face-to-face interaction with healthcare providers and companies, a hands-on demonstration with first responders, a career expo, lunch, and so much more.
Last week, the elementary Raiders had an unforgettable experience with motivational speaker, author, and character educator extraordinaire. From the moment the music started, our primary and intermediate students were engaged, laughing and learning with Jim "Basketball" Jones. Raiders had a chance to spin basketballs on their fingers and their noses. They learned the importance of showing kindness, being a good listener, and living the Raider Five values. Jim gave students a chance to demonstrate being kind and doing the right thing through interactive games and activities. Even our teachers joined in on the dancing and fun.
The pictures from that were pretty amazing. Everybody had huge smiles on their faces. I'm sorry I missed that earlier. So now, moving back onto correspondence, the tax levy, Dr. Chanel.
So can we start first with the guests of the board? Just, I see my team that's completely dressed. We're a little out of order this evening, but.
I'm happy to.
The musical is in Tech Week and this evening, the board has invited our Brainstormers team to join the board so that we could celebrate them. So I would first like to introduce Ms. Christy Pope. She is the team captain, advisor of this team. Mrs. Pope, would you take over, please, and just share with us a little bit about Brainstormers? And if you want to introduce the kids or have them introduce themselves, whatever makes you comfortable?
Pow, curtsy?
No bowing.
Whatever makes you feel comfortable.
So, Brainstormers is like a team trivia, almost like College Bowl. So we do two rounds per game. Four kids each round. You have to play different kids and it's timed. So there's general random knowledge questions for five minutes. When that time's up, then there are four categories that each team gets to pick a category and it's how many questions on that category can you answer in a minute? And then the leftover questions go to, or the missed questions go to the other team. When that's done, there's another three minutes. That round is over and then the next group comes in and they do the same thing. So we had five competitions over this, over the season and we were undefeated. So then we were.
Fantastic. So great. Congratulations to you guys.
Twenty kids that did Brainstormers. So I think I have accounted six seniors that are leaving us this year. Some very strong seniors, some very strong captains. But we had four new people come and join this year. A junior and some freshmen and a sophomore. So that was exciting and they're helping me to recruit for next year. And then we were undefeated in the semifinals and obviously the finals. This is our second year that we placed first. So it's very fun. It's very fast-paced. You never know what they're going to ask and I think the kids really enjoy it. I love coaching it. It's a lot of fun. We do practice during lunches. We use the buzzer system like they have at.
Like Jeopardy?
Yep, so they have the buzzers. They get locked out. You cannot beat Attila on the buzzer. I don't care, I don't care what team you are on or how fast you are. You cannot beat this person on the buzzer. You can see them all going like this and he's already lit up, so he is on.
Mrs. Pope, how many years have you done Brainstormers?
I want to say four or five? I don't know. I used to, Kathy Callan, before she retired, used to coach Brainstormers. And then I used to just go and watch with her because it was always kind of fun. So I'd help keep scoring and that kind of stuff. So I've been doing Brainstormers unofficially and officially for probably eight or nine years now.
Can I ask some of the students what they most like about it?
Don't be shy.
It's okay.
No wrong answer?
You have to give them a buzzer. You want them to respond.
Well, I, I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have all put into this and it's certainly an accomplishment. And thank you for coming out tonight and your parents should be proud and the community's proud. Good work.
Thank you, you guys.
May I ask a question about the dress?
Ryan.
First, first of all.
I'm not a good ginger.
First of all, the, the dress is beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
Beautiful. I'm just, I'm just, I'm curious only the, the history of the dress. Was, was this in a, in a closet that was used in a musical 21 years ago? Is this, was this yours? Is this?
So, the musical takes place in the 1920s.
Okay.
We ordered this on Amazon.
Like you went on 19, you Googled 1920 dresses? Okay, I was just wondering. I mean, it's, it's truly beautiful. I'm just curious how it came about being in this room tonight, so thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Now is a good time. Everyone is welcome. It's a public meeting, so you're welcome to stay and watch. But also, we know that you are doing multiple things, so if you have to leave, now would be a good time. And I pause.
Good luck this weekend, you guys. Thank you for all you guys doing.
The audience is down.
The audience is. All right, back to me. So now, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce the Board of Education and community members that may watch when we hit the replay, to Mr. Robert Banzer. Robert is our current interim middle high school principal. We are glad to have him. Rob, will you just stand up, introduce yourself to the board? Tell them a little bit about you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm really happy to be a part of CalMum, at least for a short time. Been in education for over 35 years. Teacher, coach, assistant principal, principal, assistant superintendent, superintendent. And I can just tell you, just from what I saw here and what I've seen since I've gotten here, what's today, seven days ago, eight days ago, clearly, the priorities are, are in place and focused on the right things, in my opinion, in this district. I mean, all of what you do, this is what it translates to, what you saw tonight and just my interactions with the staff, my interactions with the students. And I'm just happy to be a part of this transition so that you can get a, an all-star, you know, to continue to lead the, the middle school and high school. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now for the big conversation. As the board knows, we've talked about our tax cap and we talked about our tax levy and what we would be able to set our levy at this year. As Bruce and I begin our conversation around budget development, presentation number three, we're going to get to a slide where we're going to discuss revenue. When we get there, I just want to remind the board that our, part of our revenue projection is the amount of money that we will collect in taxes and that's a conversation when we get to that slide, we need to be ready to have this evening if we're going to go out at the tax cap or if the board is going to challenge us when we get to that revenue slide to, to think lower than the tax cap or possibly more than. So just wanted to prep you for that part of the presentation, get us ready for that conversation. We talked a little bit already about the, the student board member. I do want to encourage you guys to read some of the information that NISBA is putting out, if you haven't already. And I'd like to take a second and just thank Mrs. Dahl. She has been doing quite a few webinars. She's staying on top of some of these things and it's been great to have her part of the team and just reminding and prompting us to keep paying attention to what is headed our way. And that's it for me in correspondence.
Thank you, Dr. Chanel. We're going to move on to board committee reports. I'll report off on the meeting I just came from, the Genesee Valley School Board Association Board President and Rep Meeting. Patrick Longo was there. As you recall, he was at our last board meeting, presenting on NISBA and he was there talking about the importance of the board and superintendent relationship and what that entailed. Patrick Burke talked a little bit about some concerns at the federal level around funding, although nothing's been really done. They're keeping their eye on that and waiting to see what happens. There's pretty status quo with everything else. I don't think much came, much more came out of that meeting. Who else had or has committee reports to report on?
Been quiet.
It's a quick meeting, back to back.
All right, we're going to move on to public forum. There is no public forum, so we're going to superintendent's report. Dr. Chanel.
So at your place setting this evening, you do have a couple of things from Kevin McGowan, our district, our BOSI's district superintendent. You are going to see the preliminary administrative budget for '25-'26. Also, in your backup notes for this week, I did include Kevin's presentation. It's about an eight-minute presentation where he does a pretty thorough job of explaining how BOSI's budgets are built. So we will vote on the BOSI's budget when we meet together on April 21st, which I imagine, you'll hear a little bit more from us, we get to the budget presentation, that that's when we'll also be asking the board to vote on our budget. As, what we vote on for the BOSI's budget is their administrative budget. The rest of the budget that BOSI's builds really comes from the services that we buy from them. So you're going to learn a little bit about what we intend to buy from them for the upcoming school year when we get to our budget development presentation. But all of the documents to help you really understand the budget are here. In a conversation with Kevin, he did share that if the board would like him to come out, if there are questions that you all have about the BOSI's budget, he'd be glad to come out to a board meeting and speak to the Board of Education about the BOSI's budget. So any follow-up questions that you have, don't hesitate to ask and I will make sure that your questions from our BOSI superintendent are answered.
Thank you. There is no old business, so we're moving on to new business. Number one, budget development presentation. Dr. Chanel.
All right. Okay, so this evening's presentation, we are going to start off talking a little bit about that BOSI's budget. So we'll share with you our BOSI's budget that we will vote on on April 21st, that you all will vote on on April 21st. Tonight, we're also going to discuss the refinement of our budget for '25-'26. We've got some proposed gap-closing measures that we can take and some proposed adjustments to revenue that you'll hear about this evening. We are definitely going to spend some time having Dr. Kaprin speak to us about our reserves, our reserve plan, and our thinking for the future around reserve planning. Our next, our next budget presentation on April 8th, we wish we would be in a spot to tell you that we would propose a budget, but we, I will say, Dr. Kaprin will speak to it a little bit. He was actually on a call today. We do believe that sometime in the week of April the 8th, we might learn what our revenues will be. Maybe we are going to get a budget within that time. But just based on what we're hearing, it doesn't sound like we'll have revenue, true revenue, quick enough to turn it around for an April 8th budget vote. So stay tuned on that. So this evening, as you are used to seeing what our, what our BOSI's expenditures are, I've tried to spotlight in some of our slides, some of our student work. So you're actually looking at what it looks like when our kids are in cosmetology programming and they're beginning to learn about the art form around makeup applications. So this is our, this is our young lady right here, Ms. Johanna Hall. She's a senior this year. Johanna has definitely enjoyed her time in career and technical education. And you will see, as you go down through the services that we purchase, BOSI's helps us with all sorts of things, from our technology infrastructure. We pay BOSI's for every computer that you're touching. Literally, every service that we can purchase through BOSI's, we do. We rely very heavily on BOSI's aid as a way in which we make every dollar in our district stretch. And so every piece that you see here in terms of our budget development, if we can put something through a BOSI's co-sir and share that and be collaborative around that service, we are doing that to stretch every dollar. Our BOSI's budget for the upcoming school year is actually very small. In terms of the percent change, we will be increasing our BOSI's budget about 3.36%. Mind you, these are, these are projections of what we believe we are going to spend. As you know, with BOSI's, when we get into a school year, should we need to send a child to an out-of-district placement through BOSI's, you actually see our BOSI's budget sort of fluctuate depending on the services that we need to buy. So we will continue to maximize every single dollar that, that the district has. In terms of the BOSI's budget itself, our biggest increases are definitely in areas where we are increasing in technology, which you know, our hardware and software just continues to grow as a district and you can imagine that that budget line will continue to grow. The difference between our revenue that we are projecting and our forecasted appropriations, this is still that number that we've been looking at. The gap that we need to close is $550,149. How are we going to do that? We're going to talk a little bit about refining some of our revenue, so I will toss it to Dr. Kaprin for him to speak to this particular slide.
Well, one of the things that we do know right now is that, you know, both there's an assembly in front of New York State, there's the governor's budget and we have her estimates. We have, in front of the assembly, they're working on a budget. The Senate is working on their budget. Both of them have small increases in foundation aid and in the changes in the formula, so we're hoping that will help us. We're also looking to refine, you know, we're also looking at some of the other revenue lines, some of which are estimates and not known or forecasted even when the budget is set. For example, the amount of sales tax the district will receive in terms of its share of the Monroe County sales tax revenue. Or what the, how BOSI's is doing. So for example, at the end of the year, if BOSI's, BOSI's isn't allowed to keep any extra savings or fund balance, so at the end of the year, they refund it to the member districts, if they have any. So there's a few items in, within the budget that with a little more time and a little more detective work, we may be able to refine on both the BOSI's, the interest income, and of course, what we get from the state.
In terms of refinement to appropriations, when we build the budgets, when we're talking about that gap that we're trying to close, I just want to remind everybody that each year, when we build a budget, we are building what we would refer to as our ideal budget. It allows us to fund programs that maybe we don't have. The budget had administrative priorities in there, which would have built in for us equipment replacement plans, technology replacement plans, additional monies in our facilities department to be able to handle equipment purchases that we have not been able to build into our budget, that maybe we've been hoping at the end of school years, should there be the ability to do some end-of-year spending, that we are at that moment trying to buy a lawnmower, trying to buy, you know, what dollars can we stretch right now to get us through another year, another couple of years? We're trying to get out of that practice and each time you see us build a budget, we're trying to build a budget that would take care of the needs of the district without having to hope that we, that we make it. So a very planned and strategic budget. So this year, in the administrative priorities, we did ask for a STEM teacher at the middle high school, a position that we do need. As the board is aware, we are also working with our science department and with the, with the University of Rochester to build another elective that would be offered to our eighth graders, which is a spot in our schedule that we've been most concerned about. Our eighth graders do have at least one semester of their eighth grade year. They have a study hall that runs every other day. It's too much downtime for them when you include home base. So we know that we have that issue. We also know that we don't currently, at the middle level, have any true STEM opportunity beyond grade six. So all of our students in grade six have a STEM opportunity, actually right here in the library with Mrs. Barber, where they begin to learn how to code and they are using the 3D printers. Then in seventh and eighth grade, they, they no longer have those opportunities. When they get back into ninth grade, they can begin to choose classes again that allow them to get back into the STEM world. So we have a little bit of a gap in our program that we need to fill. We don't have the staff at the middle high school to add STEM and add it in a, in a real way. Meaning, if we were going to offer a class, let's say, to seventh graders and we were going to have Mr. Hoy from the high school teach the class, Mr. Hoy is only going to be light in one semester, in one block. So only the kids who had a study hall at the same time that Mr. Hoy was available could get the opportunity that Mr. Hoy would provide. That's not really providing program. So when we build this next round of programming, we actually do need to dedicate a person to that to ensure that we have the availability for seventh and eighth graders, regardless where their schedule sort of has a hole or pops them out, that there's a real opportunity there versus giving opportunities only to kids whose schedules happen to align when that exists with a teacher, right? So program development can't be spotty like that. We are definitely in need of a full-time teacher if we're going to grow out a STEM program at the middle school. This budget cannot sustain the addition of that particular full-time position at this time. We would estimate that that position is increasing our budget rate around $90,000 by the time we pay the teacher and pay the healthcare and the benefits. So that is something that I am putting back on the table now, is something that we hold out for another year and try to get creative around how we build and grow programs with a budget that remains tight for us. We do have an open academic intervention position at the elementary school right now. We had a resignation and we've talked a lot about what will it mean for us if we don't fill that position. So right now, across the elementary school, and I, I've got Mrs. Pete with us today. Actually, Mrs. Meyer is not here because she's in Albany. She's at a training, but she'll be out for the next two days, digging in deeply and learning more about IXL, the assessment tool that we're using to help us drive our literacy initiative. initiative. When we're looking at our data, sometimes you have to, sometimes you have to undo things in order to put them back together. And I guess how I will explain that to you is that when we think about teaching, we talk about teaching in terms of tier one, tier two, and tier three. And in tier one, that's basically every single student in the grade gets this exact same instruction. So let's just use sixth grade English as our example. If I'm a student in sixth grade English, I'm reading the same book as all my sixth grade peers who are also in a sixth grade English class, and this is the unit that we're teaching. That's how you would define tier one. Tier two is basically, I'm reading this book and I'm doing this work in the classroom, but I need more support from my teacher than my peers do. And that's where you see win time at the elementary school, home base at the middle high school, where we begin to pull kids to either give them added instructional time, more direct instruction, or that we're giving them opportunities to learn and grow and be pushed in an area. So what do you need from us and how do we help? That's tier two. Tier three is that the teacher in the classroom has already delivered tier one and tier two, and the child is still struggling. And so now we need to add another layer of intervention, which is when we start to get to that tier three intervention. The second, we start talking about an AIS position. AIS in our structure at the elementary level is actually delivered by somebody that is not the classroom teacher. That's tier three. What we need to do for a little while, and I'm going to say, let's talk post-COVID, let's talk about the gaps in kids' ability to read and their understanding of literacy, we really need to focus on tier one. We should have about 5% of our student body at tier three. When you start to feel that that triangle that you've created where tier one is the base, it's the largest component, now let's move ourselves up the triangle, tier two in the center, tier three at the top, the fewest number of students should be in that tier three. When your tier three is starting to be the size of your tier two, and we don't look as much like a triangle as we should, we actually have to start talking about the fact that we need to reinvest in tier one and tier two to get tier three right-sized. It is not a terrible idea to let this position go unfilled while administratively, we focus for the next year and a half, maybe two, at really putting our money and our time and our energy into tier one instruction, and what does that look like? And then tier two instruction, and what does that look like? Maybe after that, we say, okay, Board of Education, we think we need, we have enough kids still that we need to go back to a tier three and add an additional tier three model. But for right now, based on the data that I'm looking at, I am going to suggest that we focus our attention in tier one and tier two. Do you have questions about that? We still have three and a half, I believe, three and a half AIS providers at the elementary school. So we are not talking about cutting our tier three. We're talking about being far more strategic about who gets to tier three and what happens once they get there.
Now, with this, eliminating this position, and you said you want to focus more on the tier one and the tier two. This would provide teachers some coaching and some guidance as to how to help those kids in tier two that they have historically just been sending off to the AIS and having those teachers really figure out how to help them, which they might not need to go off, right? The tier two is all they need, but the teachers are going to be getting some help and guidance as to how to identify and what they need to be doing as well?
That's definitely the direction that we are thinking. That's, our data suggested that's where we need to spend our time. And I actually think through conversations with teachers at the elementary school, there are many of them that say, like, our current system, because we do have the AIS providers, the lever that causes a child in their dataset to go off to tier three, there are a lot of teachers that say, I just want to keep that group with me. I just need to keep this one through in time, because if I do, there are other kids that are not being pulled for tier three that need that same direct instruction from me. So it would be great if I could keep my instructional groups running the way I need them to run, to get us ready for tomorrow, and that I'm feeling good about that. So to your answer, yes, I think they need staff development. I think they desire it. Also, I think when you build a system, when you have interventionists, sometimes when your system gets too big, it sort of drives who goes out of the room. And I think the teachers are also asking the question of how do we readdress that so that we can keep our kids and more of them in our space? So I think it's twofold. I see it in the dataset, and I think teachers would say exactly what you just said. Are you sure they need to go? I feel like I should be able to keep them for just a minute. Dropping us down a full position in tier three will mean that those levers can't stay where they are. They have to readjust. So it will give us a time to right-size our system. We have had a strength and conditioning coaching program, and I say that with a dot, dot, dot. So the first year that we put this in place, we actually set aside $35,000, and we partnered with Leroy Central School District, and we hired a strength and conditioning coach through BOSI's, making that expenditure eligible for aid. We have been unable to sustain that model. In order to go through BOSI's, you actually have to have, they hire it, itinerant teachers. So we are not just hiring a strength and conditioning certified coach, we actually have to hire somebody that is a certified physical education teacher and has strength and conditioning as something that they are passionate about. We have not been able to fill that position through our BOSI's with a certified physical education teacher. So the challenge this year was, we have the $35,000, we had already invested that, do we attempt to hire our own? And we have been unable, we've attempted to do that through the University of Rochester. They actually offered this service. There are several school districts in the Rochester area that are actually purchasing this service contractually through the U of R. Mr. Reed and I met with them over the summer. We looked at the contract with them. They felt strongly that they could provide this service to us and our athletic training service that we've been getting through U of R, only to find that they, just like all the rest of us, are struggling to find people to fill all of the positions that they had contracts for. So not only have they not been able to give us a strength and conditioning coach, but we definitely have not had athletic trainers at all of the events we have grown accustomed to having trainers for. So I'm suggesting that we eliminate this particular position to put that $35,000 back toward our programs. I'm also recommending that we reduce some of our curriculum, our summer curriculum expenditures. So we have a fairly decent-sized budget at the, for the summer curriculum work, and what I'm suggesting is not that we cut summer curriculum work, but that we become very strategic about what we will fund for this summer. So often, we've allowed teachers to create proposals of things that they want to learn, the kinds of things that they want to do with units of instruction in their class. We met as an administrative team, and we are going to start looking for, at this summer, around what goals do we want to move? And if that summer work is driving the goals that we feel we need to move in this moment around literacy or numeracy, that we would fund those particular things. But for this summer, we will back off on some of those individual teacher projects. We would maintain our technology budget, so the increases that were asked for in the administrative priorities, we would just take those back out, and the same for the facilities budget. Questions about any of those or how they will impact us?
The first two, the STEM teacher and the AIS, they are not currently filled?
Correct.
Okay. So you won't be removing a person, you just will not be filling it?
Correct. So everything that you're seeing on this slide, there is not a human being with a name attached to it. I have not had to meet with a single person to say, in order to close our budget gap, you will not be, your position will be eliminated. That hasn't had to happen. So right now, in the refinements that you're looking at, they're all things that I would consider the low-hanging fruit, right? If we have to continue, and you'll see this as we move on, where our revenue, where we're projecting our revenue to be, when we come back on April the 8th, anything that we do beyond the refinements and appropriations that you're seeing here would begin to impact differently.
I'm really curious to see how it plays out, and I know it's a long game, but the AIS position, there's such a need for support, and we've obviously facilitated the support previously, and it's still tough sledding. So I'm interested to see what the new proposal brings, and I guess it's going to be a while until we know.
I will tell you that it is not uncommon, and I myself have deployed this strategy as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, when the triangle gets misshapen, the only way sometimes to fix it is to create pressure in another area, but then to support that pressure appropriately, right? So if we provide the right kind of staff development, it shouldn't be that teachers are feeling overwhelmed, it should be that they're feeling like, oh, I needed that, that was great. I personally feel like as a teacher in a classroom, it will give them a little bit more control over some of the instructional decision-making for their kids. Will we feel that? We will, we are going to feel it, we are going to feel it, more so if we don't get our data where our data is telling us what we need it to. And I think that's what you're going to watch from this administrative team, like, how quickly can we refine, as I look back over at them, how quickly can we refine the dataset that we're looking at, which is why Mrs. Meyer is where she is right now? And she has two teacher leaders with her that are also in Albany, and they are learning. So how quickly can we use IXL to help us identify the areas that we need to identify and to build groups? Now, we have, in this building, there is one academic intervention provider, just Mrs. Hatch. So this building, 400 kids, let's say, and there's one academic intervention provider outside of the classroom teacher. We want early primary school. I will, I will say this, I will say this out loud, even if we weren't going to cut that in terms of we had the money, we should really start talking about the research around what it means for children to be pulled out and whether or not there's any research at all that suggests that tier three is the most productive way to provide children education versus maybe looking at some of the other things that we know have a larger impact in terms of research suggesting that if you really want to get underneath achievement, there are things that have a larger impact than pulling children in tier three. Staff development is locked down.
If there's a, once in a while, on April 8th, we find out that we've got an extra $67,000 that appears. My, I'm just throwing it out there, I mean, what would it take? For instance, like, the AIS position, what if, let's just say we got an extra $60,000 for conversation's sake? And let's assume that we're going to go out at cap, which I hope we do. What if we decided instead of knocking the 2.35 down $60,000, so we just got a gift from, from what's-her-name, we put it towards the AIS position? That being said, is there a dollar, can you put a, it's going to cost, what, $90,000-ish?
Yes, about $90,000.
Let's just say we got 60. Would it be possible to rethink it for only needing $30,000, knowing that we have five, five retirements coming up next year?
Not next year, right? We got to get through one more after. Next year, no retirement. The year after that, we're back. At breakage.
I guess I'm just wondering.
Yes. How would we get that back? And would that be my, would that be my recommendation to the board if we all of a sudden got $60,000? Honestly, I believe wholeheartedly that the most important thing that you can do as a school system is to give your teachers really great professional development. If we got $60,000, that would still have us short of the 90 that we would need to maintain a position, I would be enthralled at the opportunity to hire some really great staff developers to come in and out and to coach our teachers around literacy acquisition and make sure that we're ready for the big moves that are coming our way in terms of the science of reading. It's been a while since we've really done that in a very systemic way, and it's time.
It's a big ten-four. Thank you.
Yeah, it's time.
Is there, is there any way to incentivize the staff to go for literacy specialization? Would that be something that's, is that a part of professional development, or would you, what does that look like?
I mean, in terms of, in terms of, if we were to send folks back, so we do pay if teachers have a master's degree, if they want to go and get credit hours above their masters, we do have provisions where we can reimburse them to go take college-level classes. I would say the difference between that and actually having them become literacy certified versus providing staff development is that most of your teachers, especially at the elementary level and their Common Branch certification, they have had to take coursework in the teaching of reading. So what I always, when I think about what staff development is, I was a staff developer in the area of literacy for seven years. If I was to try to talk to you right now about the science of reading and what makes it important and the research behind it, my brain is going to have to go, I'm back right now. Today, I was reading about pesticides. So I've got to go way, way, way back in my brain to find this filing cabinet that I would pull out that would say the big five, let's talk about fluency. I did spend a little bit of time with Dr. Rosinsky today in a podcast, because I need, I need fluency. It was a conversation Lindsay and I were having, and then I just had to go and relearn that. No matter, the knowledge and the information that you have, it stores. And when we are reminded of those things that are very, very important, that information actually goes from the back of the brain to the front of the brain, and it becomes the most recent information. And now everything that I'm doing is being funneled through this core area of my brain that has just been refreshed on how do I teach fluency? What makes, what makes fluency instruction really good instruction? You've got to bring staff development back to the front of the brain if you want your teachers to be prepared every single day to do what they do. The research says that teachers make, we believe, and I'm sure that it is more, but we believe, researchers believe, 1,000 instructional decisions a day, 1,000 instructional decisions a day. Their staff development has to be current and in the front of their brain, so that when they're making those instructional decisions, they're doing it with the most, most up-to-date research around the teaching of reading. I still would lean that way. I've seen nothing else work than to create teachers that are making the best decisions every day.
All right, I have a question.
Yes.
This is, it's convoluted. So the savings of eliminating the first two positions, the cost savings of that, how is that balanced against providing the cost needed to provide staff development to fill tier one, tier two versus having an AIS position? And is it, I mean, it's a short-term savings, long-term gain kind of a?
So if I, if we were to provide staff development to our teachers, I didn't come prepared with this data in my head, so I'm going to, I'm going to use random numbers, right? Let's say that we have 50 educators at the elementary school. Let's say that we spend $60 and we give professional development to all 50 of those teachers, and we do so for, you know, like, a three-year, you know, commitment around the teaching of literacy. And we're going to, Dr. Kaprin will talk to us a little bit about what, what kinds of things we can fund out of a reserve, and when he doesn't suggest we use a reserve, staff development is not a bad thing to fund out of a reserve, to get a really good, I'm going to call it a blood transfusion. We need a good kick, but we could do that. So how many kids would be impacted if we did staff development for three years with all 50 teachers? Well, almost 400. Academic intervention teachers, small group instruction, I'm going to venture to say maybe an AIS provider seeing 20 kids a day?
So it's investment for the whole team?
Yeah, yeah. So like, how does that work, right? How do we, how do we do that?
Year after year after year.
Right. That the teachers will have it to use in this group and the next group.
Yes.
That's a good question.
It was a great question. Not convoluted at all.
It was. It took a minute to get out.
Move out of your space.
So let's take a look at the current revenue budget and broke it out into a few more categories. The biggest one, you know, obviously, you start right with one of the items the board started to talk about a little bit, is the property taxes. So at the tax cap levy limit, we would be able to collect the $8,105,000. That's about a 2.3% increase over the previous years. I would like to just comment that, and remind everyone, that the tax cap every year is based on what you actually collect in the previous year. To any school that doesn't go to the tax cap means they're actually impacting their future tax revenue and their tax cap limit in succeeding years. And you see, I've seen schools that have said, gee, we've got a budget gap, but boy, if we realize if we've gone backwards five years and actually gone out at the tax cap every year, we wouldn't have as big a problem, or wouldn't have a problem at all. So it's important to really think about the fact that, you know, if you can get around to, if you get that 2.3%, you know, you're at least working toward keeping a greater sustainability of the budget. Obviously, state aid is really big. That includes both, the biggest component of that is the foundation aid, which is what the state provides as its share of the some basic education, and it's the one that, you know, I think we have the most hope for that will increase when the final budget is released by the state. The pilot payments are actually, of course, things where the Economic Development Council provides a tax, a special, a special contract in lieu of actually paying property taxes. It doesn't actually create any additional revenue necessarily for the school district, because in effect, you have to remove from the levy every dollar that you collect in a pilot payment. So it's part of the revenue, but if it wasn't there, it would actually be in the tax levy. Sales tax, as we mentioned, is an estimate from Monroe County for the school district share. Medicaid is one of the sources of revenue that's budgeted here. And then, of course, there's the appropriated fund balance and restricted reserves and transfers that, you know, are kind of rolling forward from previous years, you know, amounts. It helps provide some cushion and support in the budget. Any questions there?
Before we move on from that slide, can we have a conversation about the property tax, the levy? Like, are we...
Like, are we, in terms of this slide and our revenue, is the board feeling comfortable with going out at that two point three percent increase?
Yes.
I think long-term, it's probably better to bank to have it, right?
I think if you didn't go out at the two point three, yeah, it would feel good next year in your tax bill, but then we're going to be saying, oh, I'm sorry, we really have an exceptional circumstance that we're faced with right now. It'd be a problem.
I actually appreciate that logic so much. I think in the grand, in the grand scheme of the way we should be thinking is the same way that our community, you know, I know for, for us, like in our own households, right? You see, maybe, maybe you get a cost of living adjustment, you know, in terms of how much money you're going to make or what your revenue is going to increase at home. If we all of a sudden are having this, this varied tax rate where we're just all over the place, sometimes we're going up to four, we have to go to five in order to make ends meet, you really are not giving that sort of steady increase. I think it is something to consider.
Also, I think you said to, our last meeting and this meeting, you said kind of the same thing twice, where you're looking at efficiencies within positions, and we've just shed a position and, and found a way to slice it differently. And last meeting, you talked about the administrators taking on more tasks. I think that's what the taxpayers expect. We need more efficiency, any way we can find it, maintaining academics. And I feel like our first twenty minutes of conversation was strictly focused around academics and successes, so.
We will move forward then with our portion of the revenue being something that we're no longer guessing at. We are going to say that our portion of the revenue is going to be at that two point three percent increase, and now all we're waiting on is for the state to tell us what the rest of those revenue streams will be.
Yes.
Thank you.
But if they give us more, we're still going to keep it at two point three, though.
We should, yes, we should do that, yes.
Okay.
So one of the areas we wanted to talk a little bit about and make sure, you know, that everyone that's, that's been included in part of the budget discussions and kind of the thought process is, you know, a quick discussion of reserves. And wanted to kind of frame it in a little, maybe a little different way. But as a quick reminder, reserves are essentially savings accounts that the districts, district is able to maintain for specific purposes, and they're provided both under general municipal law and under educational law. And so there's a whole series of these savings accounts that the board can decide how to fund and how to use them. And, but there are some guidelines, particularly from the state and the controller. So one of the core reasons for having these reserves is to manage uncertainty and risk. You know, you think about the actual amount of the budget that is fixed and it's small or that's within control of Cal-Mum district. You think about it, even things like the pension payments are largely driven by how well the stock market does, which, you know, so it's completely outside of the district's control. Other macroeconomic, you know, macroeconomic features include, you know, how much we get for lunch and how the agriculture department does and all kinds of things. So I just wanted to highlight that because of the uncertainty, having these reserves can be a really strong management tool for stability in the district and really supports, you know, if you have reserves, then you can weather changes in timing or amount of federal and state funding, new student enrollments, storm damage, excuse me, other facilities failure, or new mandates from the government that are unfunded, which seem to come along, continue to come along at a pretty regular basis. It also provides cash flow, and we're going to talk about credit ratings in a little bit, too. So I want to take the perspective of the controller, who I know also sends out auditing teams, but there's another side of the state controller's office, and that office and management budget, or after the controller, really looks at a metric and also identifies all kinds of municipal governments, towns, counties, and schools as to whether they're in fiscal stress. And their measures for fiscal stress are largely in four areas: low liquidity, operating deficit, how much fund balance they have, and reliance on short-term debt. In particular, I want to talk about these two middle ones, the operating deficit and low fund balance. So you really think about how much you should, how much should you have in reserves? And it's interesting to take the states, take some metrics around that. The first is, if you actually look at the metrics that the controller uses for scoring a school as to whether they're in fiscal stress, to avoid points in fund balance or reserves, you need at least ten percent of your budget in reserves. If you look at another important part of reserves, and that's maintaining a strong credit rating, because when the school issues bonds to, for capital projects or other things, the better its credit rating, the lower the amount of interest it pays. So just like it's basically going in to get a mortgage, if you've got a great credit rating, you might get a better interest rate on your mortgage than someone else. So if you look at the actual credit ratings from Moody's, and there's a supplementary slide in the presentation, it highlights that most schools that have strong credit ratings have over thirty percent of their budget in reserves. So these are a couple of metrics that are worth thinking about, you know, when, when planning, when creating a reserve plan and thinking about what you have. So I'd highlight, and I like to highlight two things here. Cal-Mum's reserves, I've broken on them into two components. What are what I like to call operational reserves. These would include things like an unassigned fund balance, the amount we have on unemployment insurance reserve, the amount in pension, the pension reserves. And that amount comes out to a little under four million dollars and is about eighteen percent of the school's budget. The district also has capital reserves, and you've already approved, the voters approved many of, a good chunk of those moving from a capital reserve to support the local share of a capital, the capital building project. But you still have about ten percent of your budget here. So when you combine the two together, you're just, just under that thirty percent figure. So you're actually in a pretty good position if you consider those other metrics, you know, target values of where you might want to be. So one of the, so one of the key things is how do you use reserves? And there's sustainable ways to use them, and there's ones that are not sustainable. So I wanted to just hear hypothetically a sample of some, what's happened with a few districts. And one of the biggest problems with reserves, particularly schools that have been told they have too much, where they decide they're going to spend down their reserves, and they use them to plug a budget deficit. And they do it for recurring costs like wages and health insurance and other people, you know, basically anything related to the people they have in the district. As a result of that, that structural deficit occurs when your revenue, your expenses, you just outstrip your revenue and you have a finite gap. And if that's the case, take a school district that may have had, say, an eight hundred thousand dollar gap. So they use, maybe use reserves to plug that gap. The next year, they've got to not only make up the eight hundred thousand from the previous year, but they've got to make it up, they've got, it's presumably the, the gap has grown in the next year and then grow in the next year. So the gap just continues to grow. And as a result, it doesn't take very many years to deplete a significant amount of reserves. So having a structural deficit is one of the metrics the fiscal control, the controller said is a problem. It hurts your credit rating, and obviously you can burn through an awful lot of savings pretty fast. So what are some sustainable uses of reserves? So basically, it's, they're one, you need to think about them as short-term or one-time expenses. So funding first-year startup costs. So if, for example, it was a new BOSI's program that cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but you were going to get a hundred thousand dollars of aid back in the second year, you might use some of those savings to seed the first year of that program, knowing that the recurring cost after aid was much smaller. That could occur also with, with the annual capital outlay project. There are proposals that have been before the state before, but they're again there this year to potentially increase that to a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital outlay project. If that was to occur, you know, the school might choose to say, well, we want to get building aid on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, so that first year might require some reserves to get it kicked off and seeded. Bridging operating expenses until you get retirements, which could be a possibility, where you say, gee, I've got some great teachers, I've got a few too many, but I want to bridge myself over a year till when I know I'm going to get higher levels of retirements, and obviously emergency repairs. So kind of the big part of this is when can you use reserves? You can use them when you have a plan to stop using them and create a smooth landing into a target reserve level that you and the, you know, public are comfortable with. So right now, in the current budget, just like last year, there is a planned use in the restricted reserves of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And part of the budget, though, is to assume that we would, if everything goes well, ideally at the end of the year, we'd be able to refund those reserves back to the target levels. So rather than just bleeding down reserves, we have to think about if we're going to spend reserves, give it both as appropriate fund balance and restricted reserves, that ideally the budget would say, if everything goes as planned, we would be able to refund these reserves back to those target levels rather than being in that structural deficit. Any questions?
I will quiz you. You ready?
Sure.
I just want to talk a little bit, like, obviously, we had a comptroller's report, and we know that the comptroller pointed out that, that we have some reserves and whether or not we have solid plans for how much money we're putting in reserves, how much money we're keeping in reserves. And I'm sure that as board members, similar to what is happening to me, is that when you're out and about, you might field some questions around the reserves. So we definitely want to take some time tonight to just, if you've been, if you've come across a question that you haven't known the answer to, like, tonight is the night for us to really get a little bit prepared for what it might sound like at the grocery store. For me, I definitely wanted to understand the credit ratings. I think being able to talk about that, thirty percent of our budget being in reserves means that when we borrow money, we are not wasting taxpayer dollars on interest rates, right? Paying, paying undue fees. Some of the other big pieces in here that I thought was pretty important tonight is that when we, what we might, we might come back at some point and ask to use some of the reserves to take care of things that we need to see, like staff development and making sure that you guys are starting to think about the reserves as something that we do use, that we maximize them, that we begin to understand them better as tools and strategies that, that keep the community getting the education it's grown to expect. Anything you've been asked to us about the comptroller's report that you think we should discuss this evening?
There was one. There was one reserve in particular that came up in the report, and I believe, I don't have the report in front of me, but I believe it was a TRS reserve. Is that correct?
I think it was unemployment.
Oh, I'm sorry, unemployment reserve. Yes. And, and I'm thinking about what Jeremy presented to us on the reserve fund, and like, there's certain ways that you can use each reserve, like, there's some limitations to that.
Right.
What are some of the ways we could use the unemployment reserve fund?
You could decide that it had too much in it and move a certain amount into another reserve or move it into the general fund. So you could, that's one of the reserves, so some of the reserves, so let's break them up. Part of the reason I like to separate out the reserves into the capital reserves and versus the operational reserves is those capital reserves, you can only use the money if voters approve their use.
Yep.
These other reserves, you can move, you've got, the board has quite a bit of flexibility about moving the money between different reserves and potentially then appropriating money from those reserves back into the budget. So unemployment could be something where you might, you might say, gee, you know, I think we're underfunded in our pension reserve, let's move some money to that. Maybe you get a tax lawsuit, a tax surcharge lawsuit in August, and you say, yeah, boy, that's a big, we have a big employer with a big property that's got a pretty good claim on their assessment, we're going to move money from unemployment into the tax surcharge reserve.
I know that that was the one that Mr. Malasani talked about needed some attention.
Yeah. And I think that's because it's very, those lawsuits are typically filed right around August first, and if you have no lie, no lawsuits pending, then there's not really any reason to keep money there.
Right.
And on the other hand, if you get those lawsuits, there's good reason to move money into it.
So as a district, if we were going to take out of a reserve, would that be the first one we took out of?
But it's, and I think that becomes part of the board's target. Would you take it out and just move it to another reserve? For example, we probably want to go back through and look at the employee benefit liability reserve, the EBLR reserve that's used to pay out sick days and things when people retire. So based on, you know, that one might be one that needs a little bit more, I think would be the case.
Okay.
I know that one of the things that just happened, because of the high flexibility of some of the reserves, like the unemployment reserve, because of the COVID grants, a lot of schools ended up building fund balance more quickly during those COVID years because of those grants. And the accountants came through and almost universally around this region said, unemployment's a good place to put it because it's flexible and it's legal for the board to do. It's, it's a very flexible reserve because you can move the money around from it quite easily. Does that, does that help?
Yes, it does.
I guess just to.
I just, it's been on my mind since we've got that comptroller's.
So just to add to it a little bit, one of the things I think we want to do is just make this more transparent and have regular conversations about this. I know the board's got a reserve plan, but I think reviewing it regularly, making sure in public, making sure that it's reset so that, for example, talking about how in public it's going to be used and where we are and how it is in the budget, for the budget, then in June, there'll be some kind of a resolution, there will be a resolution probably before the board to say, this is kind of the priorities for the fund balance at the end of the year, which we won't know exactly until the audit is finished in August, but the board would potentially create some priorities for moving the money around or taking fund balance for the end of this year and refunding some things or, or creating capacity for it. And then, you know, again, in the fall, potentially to say, did any tax surcharge lawsuits come in? Let's think about whether we need to move anything around or not, particularly, you know, after the final audit is done in September and you have the results in early October. So regular discussion about this, you know, three, four times a year is, you know, part of a strategic thing, and I think would address part of what the controller wanted, which is, it should be transparent and clear to the public and, you know, straightforward.
It, it, it is transparent and clear to the public. You've got a newspaper over in Abon or Geneseo that, that, that wants to write, write their stuff, and then you get, you get somebody who doesn't understand it. I mean, we, we haven't, I'm asking you, we haven't done anything remotely wrong. Nothing.
No, no.
Nothing. And what Jeremy did, maybe he could have put a little bit here, a little bit there, but the, the people of the thirteen people that subscribe to this newspaper, three of them read it, and they're like, wow, you, you just can't, you can't have it on, but they, they just don't get it. If, if you don't get it, that's why the grocery store, I'm not going down that aisle, going down the other aisle.
But to Bruce's point, I think the more we talk about it, the more educated we all become and our community becomes, the less misinformation is out there.
Right.
So if we're talking about this.
Yeah, no, no.
So I think that that's, that's important.
No, this is all good, but I'm just, she, she's going to get asked that in May, why, why did my, why is my hundred and fifty thousand dollar property value going up seventeen dollars a month? Because you don't want to take the money out of the, it, it's like, it just, because it's not what it's there for.
Yeah.
And I think the, part of the goal of all of this is we want to bring the best value to the taxpayers.
Sure.
That we possibly can. And by having savings and reserves, you know, you're basically able to provide good value. Think about how terrible it would be if you didn't have any capacity in the budget and all of a sudden, you know, the state decided to cut back on some funding in the middle of the year, and you were faced with cutting kindergarten or AP classes or sports. I mean, because there was just nothing in the budget to absorb something. I mean, those are terrible situations, you know, to be in, so.
They happen now.
Having capacity to weather, weather uncertainty is really critical.
So from the presentation, it sounds like we need to be committed to have no greater than thirty percent of our budget in reserves.
That actually is a board decision, and I would say, if you actually look at the table from Moody's and even similar one from S and P, they show schools with good credit ratings up to like thirty, you know, with thirty-five percent. I, I'm not sure what the highest levels are, but I know there's a few schools around Monroe County that have some pretty high reserve levels. So I don't think there's a hard number to say good or bad.
It's what the board community tolerates. It's what we can tolerate.
Yeah. And on top of it, you might just say, oh, we need, we've got a special situation and we need some money. A few things went wrong during the year that we hadn't planned on, and therefore, maybe instead of, and maybe you're at thirty percent now, but maybe you can't, maybe something bad happens one year and you get down to twenty-five. And then something on the optimistic side happens in another year, and you pop. And then something on the optimistic side happens another year, and you pop back up to 32. I don't think I'd panic if you did that.
Yeah. And is there a way to know what percentage of our current reserves were from COVID grants?
Probably, but I'm not, I mean, we could check some of that out.
I imagine, and we know what we, we know what we received. And so for us, when we, when you think about what our strategy was that we deployed, we, we did not do anything that was not either a one-time expenditure, or within the grants allowable for basically passing through. So typically, like, if we were looking at most of the federal grants that come out, we'll use the Title I, for example. You, you can't, you can't, what they refer to as double dip, right? So we, if we say this is what we're spending the Title I money on, that's what we're spending it on, we have to do that. When the COVID money came out, we already had programs, like, we already had driver's education. We were actually able to take some of the funds that we had been paying out of the general fund, and pay for those things through COVID money, which left that general fund money on the table. We then put it over in reserves.
Understood.
And, and, in, in particular, that capital reserve, and I'm not sure I could, we're not ready tonight, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna float a concept right here, of like, this is the, the capital project that this community just approved is the largest capital project we've ever had. And it has to do with the fact that we always wanna do a capital project that has zero impact on the taxpayer, and we were able to put more money over into that capital reserve, which allowed us to get a larger project. So we're gonna have a project for the first time that's gonna touch instructional spaces, right? Typically, we're talking about just maintenance, a lot of roofs, right? And you're getting ready to watch the libraries be revisited, and STEM be, be taken care of at the elementary level, and here, things that we don't have. And the way that that happened is because we built that capital reserve up enough that we were able to do a large enough project, that it wasn't just maintenance of our property, it's actually development of some innovation inside the walls of our school. I think that should, if we're gonna talk about when would we keep more money in a reserve, well, in the years where we're gearing up for a capital project, let's try to make sure that we're, the next capital project also has some instructional spaces in it. I, I think that, I think once the community gets a taste of that, like, that's also a beautiful thing to celebrate, that the COVID money did actually give us that opportunity, we haven't had that. I think one more slide after this, that just says what's coming next. So this is it, in a nutshell. We do not believe we will be ready on the 8th, just based on the governor's, the budget not really being passed yet, we're waiting on that. So you can anticipate, we, we told you to save the date for April 21st, please do, we need to be here on April 21st. That is not a Tuesday, I believe that is a Monday night, so a little off of, of our normal schedule, but make sure you keep that one. May 13th will be our public budget hearing, we invite the community to join us and ask their questions, so that they are feeling good about all the knowledge and information they need to cast that vote on the, the 20th, when we will hold, hold the annual budget vote and election of our Board of Education members. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Moving on to approval of athletic training services agreement, resolved that the Board of Education approves the written agreement between the University of Rochester and the Caledonian Mumford Central School District for the Athletic Training Services for the term of 2024, 2025, 2025, 2026, and 2026, 2027 school years, and authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute same. Have a motion, please.
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. We're gonna move to executive session. Resolved that the Board of Education adjourn to executive session at 7:15 to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Right.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Resolved that the Board of Education return to regular session at 7:56 PM. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Moving on to personnel. Personnel number one. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following as substitute teachers for the remainder of the 2024, 2025 school year. Montgomery Kessler, teacher aide substitute. Megan Mittlick, teacher aide substitute. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Moving to adjournment. Resolved that the Board of Education adjourn the meeting of March 25th, 2025 at 7:57 PM. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. That motion is carried. Have a good night.
Once again.
Thank you.